We're going to start the meeting. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board and Affordable Housing Trust, Monday, June 26, 2023, in the Wake What Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass, broadcast live on local cable channel 18, streamed live on the Town Mashpee website. It is now 6:04. I'd like to convene the meeting in open session and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a tough one. I'd like to ask for a special moment of silence for any of your own wishes, but a special moment of silence for our very own Ray Jack. Thank you. I'd like to convene the -- Alan, good to see you. I'd like to convene the joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust, and I'd like to start with public comment. So what I'll do is, I'm just going to read through the list. I will be doing a public comment prior to the Select Board starting. So if you would, if you would like to speak before the Housing Trust, as it pertains to the Housing Trust, you can do so. If I call your name, is that clear to everybody? Okay. So I'll start with top, Susan Dangle.
She's still outside. I think she probably wants the second option.
Okay. Jonathan Small. Dr. Jane Singer. Mary Wagon.
Second meeting, thank you.
Don Allen.
Here.
Would you like to speak regarding the Housing Trust?
Yes.
Okay.
We wanted to speak on the 209 Old Barnstable Road.
Yep. Yeah, to answer that question, so if it's regarding the housing and the look, that's, that would be now, just so everyone's clear.
There are three members of a working group with me.
Okay, sure. Did you all sign separately or?
Yes, they're on there, I think.
So it's.
Mike Perkins, Jay Hill.
Okay, all three, all in a row, okay.
And Artie Schneider. Artie?
And Artie Schneider, too?
Yes, he's from the.
So you're going to, all right now, okay.
So do they get nine minutes?
Nine minutes?
Nine minutes.
Really?
I'm just clarifying, Mr. Chair.
I didn't want to say that.
Actually, it's 12. There's four of them.
Do you see this list?
Artie is here, who's that?
The floor is yours, gentlemen.
Thank you. My name is Don Allen. I live in Palmer Road in Mashpee.
Jay Hill, 45 Palmer Road.
Mike Perkins, 94 Palmer Road.
And Artie Schneider?
135 West Way.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Evan. We're all residents of the three neighborhoods that abut the 209 Old Barnstable Road properties. And we appreciate the opportunity to talk with and discuss with the Select Board and the Trust the issues and concern raised by many of our residents regarding the proposed development of the 24 units on that site. As noted in Evan Lehrer sent out a letter to all the residents back, I think, December 7th of last year, outlining the proposed development of the site and actively engaging the community and solicited input of any concerns, issues or concerns that they may have. And to do that, we established a working group of residents to survey the 239 homes. And the survey asked a very simple question. Given the outline of Evan Lehrer's letter, the proposal, do you support the project as outlined, or do you oppose? And if so, what are the issues and concern? So we took a survey, and I'm going to hand out a piece of paper.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do it for you, okay. And I tried to put on a piece of paper, a high-level summary of the feedback that we got from our residents. And as I said earlier, the survey was conducted first quarter of this year. We have reviewed the survey results with Evan, one-on-one, and we've had an opportunity to talk at the planning board with the results of the survey. The data from the feedback, we talked to, sent an email, 239 homes, 192 responded, which is a very high rate, 80%. Of that, 192, 29 homes said they were opposed, supported the project, and 163 were opposed. And we have documentation of all the feedback, written feedback and commentary from our residents, and we distilled it down after the working group got together, and it came down to three major issues. First and foremost was road safety in that area of town. And the road safety would be characterized, I think Jay will talk to this later, that the current conditions, we consider highly unsafe roads in terms of volume, the types of truck traffic, no sidewalks, no illuminated crosswalks for the residents there. And we've diverted traffic, truck traffic down through here, off of 151 and Great Neck Road North, through the residential community. The second issue that was cited by our residents was, they considered when you look at adding 24 housing units on 3.7 acres, it's literally too small for, if you envision, good quality of life for the residents that would live there. And the third issue named by many of our residents was a concern where adding 24 housing units limited no access to searing and would exacerbate the already water pollution quality problems in the town of Mashpee. So in greater detail, I'd like to go back to the first issue that was discussed here, road safety. And we characterize unsafe roads today, and Jay would talk to that in more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a map here of our area, which also includes parcel 209. I'll be brief. The topic tonight is traffic, traffic, traffic. In recent years, heavy trucks have been rerouted. 18-wheelers and heavy dump trucks now pass down Route 130 to Great Neck North, to Lowell, to Old Barnstable, to 151, and back, all day. All these heavy trucks now directly pass proposed parcel 209. You can check on your map. Also in recent years, another disastrous decision was made when all of Quasnet Valley Elementary School buses, mornings and afternoons, now exit on Snead Drive. This is the old hayway road. This rerouting also directly passes proposal parcel 209. Please take a look at your map at your next meetings, and you'll see that 209 is surrounded by traffic. There was no previous study ever presented on this project. The last open meetings on 209 were discussed way back in 217, that's over six years ago, and since then, this entire area has greatly increased in housing and condo numbers. The increased numbers of joggers, bikers, golfers, mothers with children, daily trips to the stores from the Quasnet Valley condos for the Quasnet Valley Estates, and even the villages, all using Old Barnstable and Lowell, make this a very, very dangerous area. I respectfully ask you, Mr. Chairman, and your committee members, in fact, I openly ask all committee members on the Affordable Housing Committee, the planning boards, and our Select Board, anyone who has a decision on this affordable, on this proposed affordable project, to make a site visit of your own. See for yourselves the dangers of the traffics on these roads. These are the busiest roads in Mashpee, except for 130, 151, 28. Place yourselves with your children. Take a walk with your dog on Old Barnstable and Lowell, and look across the street at parcel 209. The picture is 1,000 words. I thank you very much for your valuable time this evening, Mr. Chairman, pleased for, yes, for the traffic study. Thank you. Thank you all.
Do I get my three minutes?
No, go ahead.
I'll be, I'll be less than three minutes.
Okay.
I just want to address the last category that Don referenced, which is density. And we did our own analysis to try to get our arms around how to approach this. We looked at Quasnet Valley Estates, Quasnet Valley East Condos, Casper Circle, new development, 209, Mashpee Village, 950 Thelmoth Road, and then 108 Commercial Street. And we looked at the acreage for all those properties in the aggregate, the number of bedrooms associated with each of those developments, or proposed developments, to come up with a ratio of bedrooms per acre. And 209, as it stands right now, with 24 units, assuming it would be 48 bedrooms, that would have a density factor of 13.3 per acre of bedrooms in relation to Quasnet Valley, for example, 7.8. The condos, 11 even. 950 Thelmoth Road would be 5.9. 108 Commercial, if that got development to the level we think, would be around 11. So from a density standpoint, we think this is a pretty tight area in conjunction with the traffic situation to house 24 units, assuming that's 48 bedrooms.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express. My name is Ellen Clintert. I live at 174 Lowell Road, Mashpee, Unit 105 at Quasnet Valley condominiums. I've been the sole owner of this condominium for 29-plus years, and I have seen various changes to the infrastructure surrounding me, including the rerouting of traffic from Great Neck Road North to Route 151 by means of Lowell Road. This road is now the conduit for commercial and oversized vehicles that speed along this road as if it were a highway. If this proposal for affordable housing is carried out at the corner of Lowell Road and Barnstable Road, it will add to an already congested and dangerous situation. Planners plan, developers develop, and in most cases then leave the neighborhood to deal with the traffic, the sidewalks, the lighting, or lack thereof. This designated area is in the middle of two schools, one golf course, a condominium housing many elderly people, and those residents who walk along Lowell Road for exercise and a walkable route to the shopping center. I am extremely sympathetic to the housing shortage and difficulty for ordinary, hard-working people to find affordable housing. The issue is not that, the issue is the location, and I strongly oppose this and urge all those who are having anything to do with the planning of this to just reconsider and consider the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hannan?
I'm going to talk or someone set my own timer.
It's right there anyways, just so you know.
All right. So I am in a butter. I'm at one Snead Drive, so kind of like a little diagonal to the whole thing. So what I'm here to talk about is perspective. So let's just get it out there, right? We're all for affordable housing. I don't think anybody's not for affordable housing. The problem that we're having as residents in the community is, we're left scratching our heads without answers to things. Let's start with Commercial Street. Commercial Street was perfect property, perfect land, perfect residential area to build on, and then something happened to it that we're not allowed as residents to know about it. I understand that it went to Land Court, was what Evan told me. The last time I went to a planning board, Mary bit my head off saying.
Sorry, sir.
Oh, no, but you did. You bit my head off saying it's in Land Court, and then told me you were going to do a site visit, which we're still waiting on her. And then there's other questions we have as well around it, like, why are we, why is the plan that we were sent by Evan does not talk about community engagement on whether the project would move forward? If you look at the schedule, the project's moving forward whether we like it or not, we just get to pick the roof tile. That's not what we understood. We understood coming into this that it would be a slow and deliberate process with community engagement, and it's not. There's also a website that was put forth for transparency. Sometime in March, we were adding, there were a bunch of letters added to it, some pro, one con. We were told it was going to be transparent. As soon as it started to get flooded with negative letters, this website stopped being added to. So the website remains in suspension since March because the town doesn't want people to know that 85 to 90% of people are against this. Just think about that in your normal life, in your normal job roles. If somebody came to me in my job and said, "Mike, what you're about to do in your job, 90% of the company's against it," what would my boss do? I mean, think about it. My boss would be like, "Mike, why are you doing that? What would be the point of you doing that if 90% are against it?" So we, as the residents, are left feeling, well, do we have a voice here? Because 90% of us aren't cool with it, but we're getting letters going, "Hey, this is just going to happen, and you guys get to pick the roof tile." So early on, when I met with the town, I was told if there was an overwhelming response of negativity, that the town would have no choice but to reconsider it. I'm hoping that still happens, but based on the information that we're being communicated from the town, one, it's not transparent, and two, it sounds like, hey, you guys can complain all you want, but we're going to go ahead and do this anyway. So I understand you're voting on a traffic study right now. My personal opinion is that's just to try to placate things, because I don't think there's going to be actual conversation of, is 3.7 acres going to get us closer to our affordable housing goals? Thanks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All that on the time. Lynda Dallas?
Hi, thank you.
How are you?
My name, okay, my name is Lynda Dallas.
Hi. Thank you.
How are you?
My name, okay. My name is Linda Dallas. I live at 174 Lowell, Unit 47. And, you know, a lot of people walk along the golf trail there, and they see the damage that they're doing to the side. I mean, there's new houses. They look right into other people's bedrooms and patios, which is okay. That can be fixed. But the thing is, I don't understand how you could build these supposedly million-dollar homes, eight of them, and then build 48 or 24 small condos at the same space without being super crowded, that's coming into the street there, coming right across from the school where the kids go. It's gonna be an awful lot of traffic, and it's gonna be really hard to keep the kids safe. One time or another, there's gonna be some kind of major injury. I worked at a hospital in Catscan for 50 years, and I've seen a lot. Okay? So, you know, there's other places, not affordable housing is fine, but there's other places not to make it so crowded. Like, you know, on the other side between 28 and Great Neck Road, I don't know what that land there is doing with all that stuff with all the forest there. There's a big piece of land there. I don't know if you can purchase that and use that. That would be perfect. And just use a crosswork person to do that. I mean, it's, you don't have to crowd everybody into one space. There's plenty of room to move people, not to... And if I bought one of those fancy houses and had affordable living across from me, I was like, I would move. Matter of fact, a lot of people in Questack Valley condos will move if it's done. And that's just from people that I talked to, because they're afraid. When you get that many people together, they're afraid of what's gonna happen. Because no matter how much of a good family you are, when you get people, you know, there's someone in the family that's not good. I mean, I grew up poor. I was great. My sister was great, and my brother was a drug addict. Okay? So no matter how good your parents are, somewhere, something's gonna happen when you crowd that many people together. So please, can we just spread the things out? Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn McCarthy?
Next one.
Next one. John Barone?
Evening. My name's John Barron. I live at Playa Circle. Thanks for all your service to the town. It's much appreciated. Anyway, I'd just like to talk a little bit again about the density in that area. Six years ago, this project was put on hold or tabled, or I'm not sure what you call it, but it was put on hold. Since that time, in our area, in the Quashnet Valley area, they've already built or in the process of building many, many homes. There were 300 new condos added to Southport. There's the Country Club Estates that I believe at completion is going to be over 100 homes, which is right next to the golf course. We have eight new homes since 2016 in our neighborhood at Quashnet Valley Estates. So, and we've, and there's new, there's four new homes that were built on Old Barnstable across from the schools. And then there's eight more homes in the process of being built in the new development of Casper Circle. So in the last six years, there've been 420 approximately new homes coming into the neighborhood. So if you want to talk about density, I think that really has impacted our area. And then lastly, our neighborhood is surrounded today by Mashpee Enterprises. We have two schools, and they empty right out into our neighborhood. We have the fire, police, senior center, boys and girls clubs on the back of our neighborhood. And we do have an affordable housing project, not project, development on our other side of our neighborhood. It's been there since the '70s, and as far as I know, since I've lived here nine years. They're great neighbors, so I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying, we have a lot of Mashpee developments, Town of Mashpee developments, surrounding us as is, and there might be a better place to put that going forward. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anthony Vinuti?
Thank you. I live at 27 Snee Drive, and I just want to reinforce the comments that our committee made. I'm president of the Quashnet Valley Association, and we bought the golf course. And we've done some random statistics as to the safety issues, and the issue that we've discussed here obviously is a lot about traffic and density and so on. And the concern is not so much the fact that we don't want affordable housing, we know it's necessary. I think that this plot of land would create a very dangerous situation for the individuals that would reside in that community. If we talk about 24 homes, and perhaps that's 48 cars hitting the neighborhood, 24 homes, two children per home, that's 48 more children. They're surrounded and landlocked and have no access conveniently or safety-wise to any of the properties above them. So the question is, what happens to those children? Currently, if you look at the golf course, in the course of a day, you probably have anywhere from 150 to 200 people crossing Old Barnstable Road and Lowell Street while they're playing golf on the golf course, along with the fact that we have a number of people walking, as has been discussed earlier. So the issue really is the traffic and the density, but also the safety of the people who might reside in that community. And I really think you have to keep that in the forefront relative to any future situations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lynn Barbie? Got it. That was everybody who signed, right? Except the people, okay. All right. So... So we got actually discussion and approval of the community preservation application.
Yes. I presented that when David was chair. He and I discussed it and wanted to bring that forward to try to get some more money in the funds for affordable housing and for projects that we saw coming. I went before the CPC. I think they're in support of it, but they just want to make sure that the Board of Trustees is also in favor of this application going forward. They wanted a vote from you folks to agree that that was a worthwhile thing to do.
This is a vote for recommendation before it goes back to CPC?
Back to CPC, yes.
And this basically is money that we could use for anything, the affordable housing, traffic studies?
Yeah, rental, whatever. We could use it for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, purchasing a foreclosed home. We could use it for anything.
Anybody on the board wanna have any input?
I think the only way the trust can be effective is to have resources like this and be in the position to prioritize which developments are more important than others. There's sometimes an order to this. And to be able to make sure the ones that the town really wants is successful with gap financing in the form of soft loans. This group can function as a bank. I mean, it was intended to function as a bank and deliver the resources that were critical to fill the gaps when the state couldn't do it and the federal government couldn't do it, and make the development financially feasible when it could not be otherwise. So I think this is critical to the ability of this group to move affordable housing forward in some way or other that's acceptable to the town.
Okay. I'll just go in order, actually. Kayla, you have any?
No, that makes sense to me. We've discussed it before, and I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Mr. O'Hare?
No. You bring up a good point, and I think it seems like now that like all of this is... All of this seems to be coming down all at once, but we haven't had any real discussions on this. I think there's time to take another look at this, because I think what I'm hearing here is the concerns are valid concerns. It's a small lot in comparison, and it's surrounded by roads on all three sides. So that being the case, I don't know that that's the best location for young children and families, you know, getting in and out of the neighborhood. It'd be great if they had direct access to the ball fields across the street, but they don't.
Just so you know, we're gonna talk about that. But actually, this is just a fund, the application for the $500,000 and the request CPC for funding.
And I have no problem with funding it, but I don't know how far I want to move on this. I mean, if you want to have the funds available, point of order?
Yeah. This is for funding. This is not for any purpose. It's not for the development that people just spoke. This is just to give us a budget so we can, when we vote on something, we can allocate it if it's approved by CPC.
No particular earmark?
No particular property at this time. This is just funds that we can use for affordable housing, and they're ready and available.
Not directed anywhere.
Yep. So Carol?
I agree. I agree. Yes.
Mr. Whedon?
Yeah, I agree with Alan's statements. You know, he articulated that very clear. I think anything that falls within the trust authority to be able to do, after hearing tonight's comments, you know, I think this allows the trust to have funding available to do more comprehensive studies before we move forward too fast. And so, you know, I fully support it moving forward to the CPC for review and consideration.
I'm in agreement. I think that we have to prioritize these funds to make sure they're available when something does come up and we can move forward quickly.
Short and sweet. I have to agree. I don't have any objection to this. I think it's a long time coming, you know, to have it available when something pops up. And it doesn't necessarily have to, like I said, it has nothing to do with, just so everybody knows, this is purely a budget, so we can use it for affordable housing, has nothing to do with a specific project, and that's, I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. So other than that, if, like, accept a motion to...
Motion to accept and approve the Affordable Housing Trust $500,000 application to the CPC for consideration.
All right, first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll tell you, Mr. Hespin.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And I'm a yes. Unanimous by all present. Mr. O'Hare? You have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I think it, I would like to start with 209 Old Barnstable Road.
Have at it.
Everyone seemed to have received my most recent letter. I'm happy to see so many people in attendance today. Just to kind of relay the land, 209 Old Barnstable Road has been a property that's been discussed for affordable housing purposes for many, many years. And it was the logical choice to move to next in support of any affordable housing production, because the planning work has largely been complete from a feasibility perspective. The feasibility work has been completed, giving us the data to support working with the neighborhood to define strategies that they may possibly be able to support here. As many residents of the neighborhood noted, I sent out communications to them many months ago to lay out a conceptual process and to invite them to participate in that process because we are in a crisis. The availability of attainable, sustainable, long-term, year-round housing is, the outlook is getting worse, and our opportunities to produce units to house Mashpee families and others is limited and is relatively finite. Over the past year, we've just gone through the local comprehensive planning process. Utilization of town-owned lands for the production of affordable housing maintains one of the number-one goals and strategies for working towards meeting Mashpee's affordable housing needs. And as we got through to construction of Leclerc Village, which is underway and we're proud of, and looking towards 108 Commercial Street, 108 Commercial Street has had title issues that needed to be resolved, and it remained unresolved. And so in the absence of having those title issues resolved, we needed to proceed on another path. So I bring, I brought you 209, I'd say, back last November to ask you for your support in pursuing this conceptual pathway to engage the neighborhood and to work with the neighborhood on understanding what their most substantive and significant concerns are so that we can do our best to address and mitigate those. I don't believe I've ever stated or otherwise affirmed that this was a done deal. However, I'm certain I've stated that staff, me, Evan Lehrer as town planner, would have a difficult time not recommending proceeding in the absence of significant substantive empirical evidence that it would truly be detrimental to the existing conditions of the town. So in my most recent communication to the neighborhood, I provided, A, the notice to them that this issue would be discussed, because I met with representatives of the neighborhood back in January or February, where they outlined the findings of their survey, and we had a conversation about some of the, you know, more qualitative aspects of their concern and traffic concerns as it relates to the existing condition, and as well as any proposed expansion or additional development in the area, was the number-one land-use-related impact that we can understand more in hopes to improve the existing condition. For affordable housing, proximity to infrastructure like sidewalks and shopping and amenities and schools is an absolute value add. It is not a detriment, but it's important for us to understand what those impacts are going to be so that the folk, families who do live there, maintain access and connectivity to those services, but residents in the area who are currently stating that there's a dangerous traffic-related situation and like to walk and run but don't currently have safe amenities to do so, this project can provide us an opportunity to, A, understand what our mitigation options are, intersection improvements, multimodal intersection improvements, accommodating pedestrians. These are things that we can understand by way of a traffic study. And so we are in a unique position when we are offering a request for proposals to procure a developer for this purpose, to make our expectations clear, what the developer's obligations are for improvements, and if, and outside the scope of that development, what we can prioritize local funding for to improve the traffic flow situation in that particular neighborhood. So that's what I'm here to focus on tonight, but I do want to make very clear that I provided a conceptual schedule in my letter to the neighborhood. I'm hesitant, I was hesitant to do that because it's conceptual. This is subject to change. It is subject to decisions by you and other policymakers to determine the pathway forward. But I found in some of my communication, I provided that letter at the request of the neighborhood and that conceptual timeline, because in the absence of decision-making, people are concerned that things are happening without their knowledge. And when I had asked for the traffic study many months ago, it was asked of me, what happens next? When do we participate? When's our opportunity? And in the absence of an agenda of the trust, there was not a substantive update. But when there was, as I stated I would, I wrote a letter and submitted it to every single resident of that entire neighborhood, including Casper Circle, the condominiums, everyone with an address on Lowell Road and Old Barnstable Road. So this is the beginning. This is the first substantive action I'm asking the trust to take today in an iterative process. The traffic study is critical to define our next steps of the engagement. What we want to do next, what I would like to do next with the neighborhood, once we understand traffic-related, the existing conditions for traffic, what in consideration of the densities contemplated in the feasibility study will do to the existing condition so that we can identify mitigation options. Those mitigation options will clearly have an impact on any site plan or site design considerations. That's the next step. We need to understand the traffic issue before I can have thoughtful discussions about what any conceptual design schema would look like. But I want to be clear. I really, it is my professional opinion that the crisis is so severe that I can't understand what data would exist that wouldn't justify proceeding. However, I'm not, I'm not the decision-maker in this regard. But I do, I am responsible for outlining a participatory process to understand concerns and provide options to mitigate those concerns. That's my goal. So in consideration of all of that, I'm asking you to approve a transportation impact assessment, to authorize procuring a consultant for that purpose. We, my office recently procured a consultant for a transportation impact assessment at a nine-lot commercial industrial subdivision. The cost between our most advantageous... The cost between, our, our, our most advantageous proposal was $13,000. We received bids up to, I want to say $18,000. That's the general expense you would be looking at. But I do think it's money well spent to move forward and understand this particular request further.
So Evan, I'll start off if you don't mind. I just, and maybe it's, other board members have the same question. So this traffic study, you know, listening to everybody and I, I do notice, especially with 151 recently with the traffic and the trucks, I have heard a lot of complaints and I've seen it. It has been an incredible increase of traffic, heavy trucks. So the traffic study, would that cover, that would cover potential sidewalk, need for sidewalks?
Yes.
A large truck traffic, would that be considered because of the, the 90 turn?
This would, it would be an evaluation of capacity, of, A, roadway capacity, existing intersection geometry, availability of multimodal pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks or bike paths. And also like the radii of, of just, of the turns along the way, that large curve up in Old Barnstable Road. Ultimately, we need an understanding of who is driving there and how many times per day and at what times per day. So this would include real-time traffic counts and an assessment of those data as well as an evaluation of every intersection within the project area, which I would propose to be the intersection of Route 151 and Old Barnstable Road down to the end of Old Barnstable Road at Great Neck Road, but also inclusive of Lowell Road going past the schools.
And what about wastewater?
Wastewater, just like it was Leclerc Village, would need to be evaluated or has been evaluated by way of the feasibility study. It'll likely require an advanced denitrifying septic system, just like we did at Leclerc Village. Further, this particular site also is in mapped priority habitat, so it has some conservation implications as well and mitigation actions required for that environment, or rare species endangered habitat.
So the study would include sidewalks, traffic, and the whole thing? And it would at least give us the findings and the results of what sounds like a lot of the neighbors are already experiencing?
Absolutely. The goal of the study is to understand the existing condition and then the impact of any new development and then improve the existing condition.
Okay. I'll, I'll go this way. Greg, do you have any?
Yeah, just thinking about the feasibility study regarding the different paths that John was mentioning, what about something like a, a bike path and things like that? Would that be included in that? And that, that study, the feasibility of that?
Yes.
And what about where you would have, if you needed stoplights or some other mitigating factors for that, would that be also described in the report?
Yes, it would, with recommendations made.
Mr. Whedon.
Couple of questions. You know, how did we get to the 48 bedrooms count? Is that, is that, are we bound to that, to, to make it a viable project?
That describes the maximum density the site can sustain in consideration of the existing conditions, availability of infrastructure notably, like wastewater discharge. So that was, there's a, there was a feasibility study conducted by Horsey-Witten, I want to say 2013. That report outlines the maximum densities and you are not bound to that figure.
Only, only because, you know, a lot of good questions brought up tonight. You know, proximity to the Quashnet River, we've all heard Brian Howes tell us how, you know, Mashpee, Quashnet River and Mashpee River are, are the two most contaminated rivers on Cape Cod. So that's a priority concern.
Understood.
Density, you know, anywhere from 12 to, you know, even on average, 18 bedrooms, you know, figuring two to three bedroom units. It does sound like a lot for a 3.7 acre lot that's on a corner of a pretty, you know, not extremely busy, but, you know, there's a lot going on there with the school systems and the golf carts crossing and everything else.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's a legitimate concern. Is there, and then I guess the other thing I was wondering is, is there another project that's currently developed that's similar in size and scale for our understanding?
To put it in perspective, I mean, Leclerc Village is, is a good example. Leclerc Village is composed of three separate parcels, not just one. So the 13 or so acres Leclerc Village is spread over is largely undisturbed. One parcel is completely set as mitigation. The other parcel has its septic system on it. The IA system is on adjacent parcel. The, the 49 units of, of, of Leclerc Village are contained on a smaller land area than what we're discussing right now.
Wow.
And I can provide you, David, a site plan outlining that.
Only because this area, you know,
I believe that the Leclerc Village parcel is on 2.9 or almost three acres, all, all of the residential structures. So again, this, this site doesn't have, doesn't benefit from an additional parcel to site a wastewater treatment system on, so it would have to be contained on-site. But again, the parcel that houses every structure and every parking space is on smaller land area at Leclerc Village.
Because for me, you know, I'm not sure if you were to do some sort of treatment facility or anything like that, I don't, I don't know how, where you're going to put that on 3.7 acres, you know, with there, with that many units.
Understood.
And it doesn't look like a lot of, you know, any adjacent parcels that are undeveloped to where you could mitigate anything like that, you know. So it does look challenging.
I think, you know, many people that have spoke have said, you know, this is, this is, there's a lot of traffic, we're surrounded by traffic, you know, that's true. And it's the geographic center of town where life and amenities are, which is also where we really want to consider citing affordable housing.
Would this go before a Cape Cod Commission?
No, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't.
It would be likely permitted if, if you proceed with this as a Chapter 40B, which does not trigger developments of regional impact review.
Carol?
Yeah, I, I have to agree too. 48 bedrooms. There's a lot of, a lot of bedrooms to put in that one little spot. I understand, but we're looking at, and I, I know we've talked about this, this corner, but with the, the roadwork that was being done on 151, we all had to use Lowell Road. So we know what's going down there. And people do fly, no question, and there was big trucks. I'm surprised that we didn't have any incidents over this winter. I was using the road quite a bit. Normally I don't go that way, but because of diversion, I had to. And, and that site did become a concern going down that road. I understand everybody's concern here tonight because of that. And you're going to put children on this parcel. And I, I, I don't know. I have a lot of, lot more concerns now after using that road this winter. And if we put sidewalks and bicycle paths, it's just going to bring more kids and more children out to the main road.
It'll also slow traffic down.
All right, all right. Quiet, please.
One other question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How many, how many homes were, how many units were being, were being considered in that project that was mentioned up the street at Assumet and 130?
That was, though, the numbers proposed there, I can't recall. It was asked for something like 33 bedrooms or 30 units. I can't, I can't recall. There was never a definitive project there. It moved, it moved on.
Right.
So again, and just to clarify too, I want to, I'll, I'm going to go to you, Tom, next, but as far as, this is for a traffic study only. So this is, we're talking about a traffic study. It doesn't mean we're saying go forward with the project, but I believe the road does have some challenges right now. And if we do the traffic study, I think those challenges will, concerns will, will be presented. So Mr. O'Hara.
Yeah, I, I can't say I'm a big supporter of this parcel. It'd be good for private residences. I mean, they can do something with the, the split and the Y, however they deal with it. I do agree that the Mary Leclerc's area over there, we, we talked about it at the, the opening ceremonies, that they were, they had all this potential land that could be used. They just don't have wastewater treatment systems available. But that seems to be something that's pretty reasonable and feasible. So I think we should probably concentrate. It's a beautiful location. You, you were there. We've all been there. It's beautiful and I think anybody would be pleased to raise their family there. I really do. Amongst other parcels of land as well, which is down by Orchard Road, which is, we've been kicking that one around for a long time. So that's something that, off the, off of one, the highway, off of 28, but, not 28, but one, Great Neck Road. Yeah, not Great.
Samson's Mill.
But it's, it's, it's a great location down there, just after Orchard. And that's, those are, I think, locations that we should be looking at. And I know we need this housing for affordable housing. The unfortunate thing is affordable housing is, we're all going to need affordable housing if it keeps going up the way it is. This doesn't get any less expensive, but thank you.
Kayla.
Thank you. I too hear everybody's concerns and, and understand that they're important. I would also support a, a traffic study, especially if there could be, in that study, ways to look at mitigation, but also value added to the neighborhood with walks that go, walks and bike paths that go beyond that area. I'm also wondering, and I don't know the answer to this, but could a traffic study possibly look at restricting trucks from the area? Is that a possibility?
That question was asked by the Planning Board's Transportation Consultant who assisted in the preparation of our comprehensive plan element relative to traffic, who essentially alluded to the fact that it's a, it's a, it's a legal nightmare and very unlikely to be successful if you were to try to restrict the use of public roads to certain types of vehicles. I don't have the specific technical data or his specific recommendation, but that was, that's what my memory is telling me.
I also have a question and I, that I don't think's been answered. Do we need to be at 48 bedrooms? Could this be scaled down in some way and still be a feasible project?
The, any RFP that is issued by the town for affordable housing development is completely at your discretion to approve and, and, and advertise. I think it would be a shame to reduce the densities of any affordable housing project in the town, given the limited opportunities that we have to provide family housing. However, it is within your discretion to do.
And I just have, I just have one more question. You talked about the environmental sensitivity of the area. Would, will a study look at that as well?
The feasibility study considered the environmental impacts of the proposed development with the existing conditions relative to infrastructure, so. If, if there's something in the study that needs further understanding or you would like to evaluate further, you are, you may consider and, and seek additional analyses.
Thank you.
Alan.
I guess, I do understand the concerns of the neighborhood for what would be a significant change in the number of units that are there. Not that there aren't going to be units that will, housing that will be provided in that neighborhood of equal or greater quantities probably in the future, but of a very different character, not on a site like this. And I think I would be feeling the same way if I were living in that area. I would be feeling a great deal of concern for the kinds of change that the neighborhood would be experiencing. The other side of that picture, though, is that we have a job to do. There's, there's a need for 1,000 units of affordable housing in town. And we have a very limited options to do that. That's the need. The 10% goal is only, is like 300 or 400 units at this point, given the, the new census that's out, which also will be very difficult to do and is probably beyond the capacity of town-owned land to do that. So we would be dependent on private developers coming before us to achieve even that more limited goal. So we're facing a difficult choice here. Either we put everything in play that we possibly can find, small and large, or we fail to meet the need to such an extent that businesses in town will still have, be short the staffing they need to run a successful business. Our economy will not grow as fast as it could or would even just stagnate. All these things we've heard. This is a matter of difficult choices. And our job is to find a way to do it. That's what this group is all about. So I think we have to find a way to do it on every site that comes before us. Evan decided to put the traffic study out there ahead of what is normally the case. A development process like this normally puts everything into the development process, all, all simultaneously. In order not to slow it down so much, you're risking either expenses and inflation growing the cost of the project to the point where it's much more expensive than the resources that the town set aside to do, to achieve that goal. Or that the opportunity just closes for one reason or another because of a variety of things that come to pass, other parts of the development that are in the feasibility study that just don't pan out. Not just traffic, but a whole bunch of other things. I think the wastewater issue was dealt with in the, in the feasibility study, but even that plans for how you deal with that change and are changing in town as, as we put the plans in place to deal with it. So this might not be as good an area as other areas in town given the way we are developing our, our treatment plan and our sewer system. But do we even have the luxury to ignore that when those other sites just aren't available? They aren't in play. And the importance of the housing production plan is to try to put a number of these possible sites in play so we can see the total picture. How much, how many units will we be developing if all these sites get put into play? Recognizing that traditionally, we're lucky if half of them ever pan out because a lot of them just don't pan out during the feasibility stage. So if you can't meet it when you put everything on the table and, and do your calculations and say, we're not going to meet the need anywhere near what it, what it was, what, what we need to do, then what do we do? Just do nothing and let people move out of the Cape? While market housing continues to be built and continues to drive land costs up. So not only do we not meet the problem, we make the problem worse. So I would hope that this feasibility study with the traffic study, and Evan decided to put this out first so that the neighborhood would have a chance to express its problems. Unlike some of what I heard, that the town is doing something to hide what's really going on, this traffic study allows you the study, allows you the opportunity, as you have tonight, to actually express your feelings and get your, your thoughts in. And they're important because we have to deal with these issues you're raising. I'm not saying you're not raising legitimate issues, but I'm saying, given the, the need we have for affordable housing, we have to deal with those issues and find a way to solve them in a way that mitigates the problems in the neighborhood and makes them acceptable, more acceptable than just not meeting the need at all. And in the process, maybe there are things the town can do to alleviate the traffic problems you're feeling and other problems you're seeing on the site. So we come up with a, some sort of a compromise that's less severe than what you thought, but we also contribute to the housing problem, the, the need for affordable housing and meeting the need for affordable housing in ways that count. So I don't think this is the point, time to say yes or no. This is the time to move ahead with the traffic study and other things that a developer would normally do and hope that they work out and hope we can work it on a way that mitigates the problems in the neighborhood and continues to have the neighborhood involved from the beginning to the time the units are occupied. This is not just a one-time deal where we say yes or no to the project and that's it. These developments have question marks all the way through and they're long, they're a long process. They take four, five, six years to get to the point where construction starts. And at every single point along the way, the neighbors and the professionals have problems they have to confront. And those problems are important to confront. Not saying they aren't, but we need to deal with them.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Evan, my question for you is, if there was a motion to authorize a traffic impact assessment, there's no cost, right? So would it be an up to or?
Or? We'd be preparing a request for quote that we would issue to consultants for their response. Anything less than $50,000 is just a request for quotes and qualifications, and we would choose the qualified, the most qualified with the best price. If quotes come in in excess of 50,000, we would need to go back to do a full RFP process, which is more intensive, and the review and scoring process is more intensive. So what I'm asking you to do is establish a reasonable budget so that I can note that in the RFQ, perhaps of $20,000 or so.
So in the motion would have to be an up to authorize of $20,000? That's basically what I was asking. Do we have to?
So I'm basing that.
Would that be reasonable?
I'm basing that figure on our most recent procurement of a traffic consultant of a similar scope, which ranged between 13 and 18. You can give me a better cushion, but that would, that would cover it based on the most recent procurement I've done of something, a similar project of similar scope.
Okay.
And then obviously I would ask the Chief Procurement Officer to select the winning bidder.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Just for understanding purposes and things, I would suggest that we lay this matter, this item on the table and hear the next item of the VFW parcel. And I'm interested in hearing where that's at and what's being looked at at that site. And maybe it's the idea that we, you know, do we shift gears at this stage? You know, I don't know that we're able to make any kind of decision like that until we hear on the next item.
That's fair, and we could always circle right back.
Then we come back and take a position at that time.
Great idea. All right, Evan, if you go with that, can we?
Do you want to jump to VFW?
Yes.
Sure. So I mean, when I first presented back in November or so, the question to you about transitioning support towards pursuing 209, I believe I opened my remarks with some sort of statement to the effect that we need to begin getting comfortable doing more than one project at once. And that doesn't, you know, Leclerc Village from our, my, I began working on that project in 2018, right after I started here. That project is under construction now and won't be occupied for, I don't know, a year or so? That's almost seven years. The VFW site tonight, my plan was to ask you to support staff's preparation of the procurement documents to begin the feasibility work on that site, similar as you had for Leclerc Village and similar as you had for 209 many years ago in 2013 or so. The VFW site is not nearly as ready to move forward as, from a feasibility perspective, as 209. You can, of course, it is within the purview of the trust to direct staff to abandon one and pursue the other. I would hope that you wouldn't do that. A fair amount of effort has gone into the community engagement here, and this is the first milestone of that effort, and I would hate to abandon it tonight. I would really ask that you don't do that. However, what I'm asking relative to the VFW site, this is a much larger parcel. It is in general proximity to the under-construction wastewater treatment facility. It is generally located across Route 28 from the Sea Oaks condominiums, and the town owns a cluster of smaller parcels on Paper Streets to the west of the subject site. The purpose of the feasibility of study is to, again, to ascertain what the maximum densities could, could be on this parcel in consideration of the existing conditions environmentally and infrastructurally. That's the scope of the request, to begin, to put this parcel in play, to work through the process as you did with 950 Leclerc Village and 209. The feasibility analysis requires time. Subject to feasibility, you'll then have to be asked to, if it's feasible, the trust will need to accept the deed to that property. So there's town meeting action accompanied to this as well, which, if you want to proceed with the feasibility study, it may be prudent to contemplate an article for transfer of that deed now. I'll leave that to the trust to consider. But, I mean, that's generally it. The request is relatively minimal, because this is the absolute beginning for the VFW site. There is no data to support any type of project on that parcel, other than it is general proximity to a treatment facility and it has solid land area and is up of 28.
But I think we should start.
I think we should start.
No question on that.
I just would hope that we can continue working on 209 in conjunction with this, because that's the level of comfort, I think, that we need to become prepared for.
Does anybody have, again, this is a different request. This is, again, a feasibility study. Like you said, this is first step, and I agree. I mean, I remember all those affordable, you know, committee meetings that were, you know, there was all these locations, and it was always single-focused, and there's always something that goes wrong with, so having multiple sites looking at different potential affordable housing or whatever, because it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be affordable, correct?
What do you mean, John?
As far as VFW, the VFW site. It doesn't necessarily mean it's all going to be affordable. It could be.
Well, so that depends on the RFP that is defined and you vote to issue. It would presumably be, be consistent with the needs. So we would score a proposal more advantageous based on the criteria you define as most advantageous in the RFP. So if it's 100% affordable at certain income levels, that's what gets the most points. If it's 50% market and 50% affordable, and you, it depends on how, it depends on the RFP. And ultimately, that RFP would be developed presumably with members of the trust and staff.
And let's not forget workforce housing in all this, too.
Oh, yeah.
So let me make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to vote to authorize a traffic impact study assessment for the purpose of understanding the traffic impacts created on the 48 bedroom, the 209 right now, with a limit up to $20,000.
Okay.
Do you have to include the 48 bedrooms? Can't you just reference the address?
209, you can.
Is $20,000 enough, Carol?
It's just to do the traffic study. He said 13 to 18.
That was what I received back in March or so. I mean, I am happy to have a cushion. It helps us to have a cushion.
So if we say 20, we're still under the?
Not to exceed.
You can go 25.
I think he was mentioning, he was recommending.
No, this is a good time. I'll second that motion.
All right, so I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's great that we have the possibility of actually looking at a couple of different lots, working with one while starting another one. I think that's good planning. That's why we have an expert like this young man here, and I think it's a good way to go. So I'm a yes on it.
All right, well, any discussion still?
So we've moved from our discussion of the VFW.
Yeah, because there's no.
Back to 209 without specifying, just how I understand the motion, without specifying the bedrooms, but a feasibility study for that property.
Correct.
Okay. That's my question.
So again, we have a first and a second regarding authorizing the traffic impact.
Mr. Chair, can I make one point?
Sure.
I think in my memo to you, I contemplated a traffic study consistent with the densities contemplated in the feasibility study. We want them to consider the maximum density, because that's going to show the greatest impact on the roads and identify the real problem points. So you don't want to do a traffic study for less than was contemplated in the feasibility study.
So we want to say the 48 bedrooms.
I would just say, it would be a motion to authorize a traffic study for 209 Old Barnstable, for a bedroom, for an affordable housing project, 209 Old Barnstable Road, consistent with the densities contemplated in the feasibility study issued to the town by Horsey-Witten.
So moved.
First and a second.
Yes.
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 Okay. Unanimous by all present.
Now I make, on the feasibility study for the VFW site, we have to start from scratch.
Yes, I mean, we have no, none of the data you have had for the other projects.
So we have to do the study first.
I suggest, I think for every project, it is prudent to conduct a feasibility analysis, not just to provide data to the town, but it demonstrates investment by the town to developers potentially interested in the project.
And how long will that take?
I, Carol, I, in this minute of time, I am not certain. I don't know if any members of the trust who are part of other feasibility analyses remember the length of time.
Because I'm wondering.
I'd say four to six months, perhaps. Procurement will take a little bit more time.
So maybe wait till May for title transfer? Or to do a?
We would not be able to get to October for, I just do not believe we have enough time.
Right.
To ask the voters in October to transfer the deed.
Maybe.
Because we won't know about feasibility.
Okay.
But certainly in May.
Okay.
That's a prime apostle, too. I think that's, it's time.
So do I hear?
A motion to do a feasibility study on the VFW site. Second.
So first and a second. Any discussion?
Is there a cost?
I do not know what a budget will be for a feasibility analysis. What I would suggest is town staff review the documents for our previous feasibility analysis and determine a budget.
And then come back.
Well, if that discretion could be given to the town manager, perhaps it would make this more efficient for staff.
Okay. So a motion to allow the town manager.
I think we should come back.
That's, so you're, so the motion.
I would suggest, I would ask for your support to draft an RFQ to bring back to the trust with a contemplated price to be approved at a future meeting.
I agree.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Alan, sorry.
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
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 All right, and I'm a yes. Unanimous. Discussion in affordable housing, we're going back up to number one, discussion in Affordable Housing Trust mission and goals, consideration of upgrading, the update of the housing production plan.
So I wanted to take the opportunity, because it was contemplated recently and mentioned to me by the Assistant Town Manager, that you had an interest in discussing the trust mission and your goals and prioritizing your investments on a year-over-year basis to facilitate not just the production of units, but meeting other housing needs as they're defined in our long-term planning efforts, not just the local comprehensive plan, but specifically the housing production plan. We have just begun our work to launch the update to the housing production plan. I held my kickoff meeting with our consultants two or three weeks ago, who are Barrett Planning Group. I am meeting with our consultants with the Affordable Housing Committee on July 11th. And the reason I wanted to share, discuss the HPP with you, because that is the document, that is your strategic plan, that is where between, and outlooks of one to five years or five to 10 years, on a year-over-year basis or town meeting to town meeting basis, we have defined for you in that plan actions to bring forward projects like 209 or projects like 108 Commercial Street of the VFW site. In addition to bringing those projects forward, it would also be evaluating housing policy, like our zoning bylaws, for example, and providing actions, specific actions, to be undertaken by the requisite boards, committees, commissions, and town meeting ultimately. And so I provided in your packet the 2015 housing production plan. It has been out of date for a couple of years, and it defined a minimum production, annual production of affordable housing units in the town of Mashpee of 32 units annually to meet our minimum 10%. We have never met that goal. My issue, I think, that I have with the 2015 housing production plan is that it provided very general goals and objectives without a really specific implementation plan. Who is going to do what to effectuate whichever priority is defined in the plan? That's what we're going to focus on in this update. And so on July 11th, we'll be outlining the engagement strategy and the plan's development. We'll chart the course of this plan's development, and the plan should be, is intended to be completed and submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Community Living, I believe it is now called, by the end of December, December 31st. We are operating with CPC dollars to effectuate and facilitate the plan's development and are also supported by a grant from the Cape Cod Commission to do this. So we, Planning Department, and you and the Affordable Housing Committee, need to work together to define what your priorities are through the planning process, to work with the community to define those goals that are perhaps more narrow than have been identified through the comprehensive plan, and specifically focus on the initiatives we need to undertake to support not just the 10, what is needed to be done to achieve our 10% minimum mandate, but also the housing need that goes beyond that 10% minimum, as, you know, Alan alluded, that's 1,000 units or more there of a shortfall. So the housing production plan is a process that I hope the trust will be actively involved in and will support when it comes time to having the Select Board and Planning Board, who both need to vote to adopt this prior to submission to the state for approval. But again, the trust is your trust. You have a declaration of trust on record at the Registry of Deeds where your mission is defined. What you need are resources, which you're working through and developing and curating, which are, A, number one, the resource is the number one thing you need to effectuate positive change and impacting positively the housing landscape in Mashpee. Second is, you need, you need a plan. You need to know what to do with your money. That's the housing production plan. We're just getting started, and I'll make sure that the trust is fully informed of when those opportunities are, and we look forward for you to champion the process and, you know, be speakers of, to community members about what we're doing and why we're doing it.
So Evan, with that being said, it sounds like a lot more of this, as far as roles and responsibilities, as far as the trust goes, some of this information is percolating now, so should we reconvene in, say, what, two months' time?
So I think.
To kind of strategize and actually have a discussion about?
I think it's really important for the trust to participate in, as in a stakeholder capacity, with our consultants, whether that be in individual interviews or in a public meeting as a trust, just like we're doing with the Affordable Housing Committee. So I would suggest that you convene again, it's in about a month's time.
Okay.
To hear from me and my, our consultants.
Okay.
If the trust would be amenable to such a thing, I'm certain I can coordinate that.
Can you, yeah, so can you give me the cue as far as, because you have to have, you said something about mid-July is when you're going to have some more information, right?
So mid-July 11th is when the consultants and I are meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay.
The development of the 2015 plan was via the Affordable Housing Committee and the Planning Department, and then that plan went to the Select Board for adoption and submission to the state. We're seeking to mirror that process, but I also want to recognize that the trust is the, is the decision-maker with regard to affordable housing projects. So it's prudent and critical that you participate in a similar capacity as the committee.
Okay. We'll, we'll set that up for?
Next month?
Next one?
The next, well, the next one, I think, is like the 70s, so it'd be the one after. The next one, I think, we have, we might have a full plate, I'm not sure.
We'll check.
Okay.
Whatever the, you know, I can communicate with our consultants to ascertain the best date that you provide.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
One question on this. So with our wastewater issues, you know, over the phased approach that we're looking at, you know, phases one, two, three and things, not sure if it's going to address the problems in an expedited way as we'd like. So I'm wondering if there's a way where the Affordable Housing Plan takes into consideration where there may be a benefit to developing a kind of a more localized system to address kind of target areas within the town demographic while looking at addressing affordable housing issues to where it's more of a localized benefit rather than, you know, waiting to sewer the whole town to one centralized system.
Yeah.
If that's being considered at all.
Well, I, some of the, there's, I think, technical parts to your question that I don't know if I am qualified to respond to, but what I can say is that I believe in, I believe that it is critical that we consider our two crises, nutrient pollution in our waterways and affordable housing availability in conjunction with one another. We can, can't deal with these issues in silos. We have to be considerate of wastewater limitations, and we have to be considerate of a shortfall of housing supply, and we need to balance these issues. It can't be an either-or strategy, it just can't. And I, I won't let it be, David.
Reid?
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Evan.
Before you jump out, just a simple question. So what do you think on that, we don't have enough space, we're running out of land? Are we going to have to call for greater density? Are we going to have to look for greater height?
Well, I think it's, we do planning processes to define some of these strategies. So we went through the comprehensive plan very recently, and they're very obvious strategies that the community is willing to support to bolster efforts in housing production. Generally, there is support for increased density and height in areas. Generally, there is support for increased density and height in areas that have adequate infrastructure, but also require any produced units have a minimum provision of affordable housing. The town wants to see the town utilize town-owned land to provide affordable housing, often comes with increased density requirements because building affordable housing is very expensive. So we want to focus on the strategies that the community is telling us they'll support.
Thanks. Can I have a motion to adjourn the Affordable Housing Trust?
So move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
[inaudible]
They already signed.
People came in late.
They were all here.
I'll tell you what it is. Huh? I'll bring it, I'll bring it to you. It's a, it's my, good comment.
Try to go in, and I go like this, cross the line, went around like that. No way. I am so pissed off.
Yeah, you know what, I think we're just going to take a two-minute break. You know what? We're going to take a two-minute break.
Announce it.
All right, I'm sorry. We're going to take a two-minute break, and then we're going to start the Selectments Meeting.
I asked him, and I paid. I didn't, I didn't, I went forward to this to the guy I like, Artie, who's our new manager in Sashnet, and he was-
That's not going to happen. No, yeah, we'd love to, I mean, the whole paper's trying to-
I drove cab, attacked-
Is to introduce an article for select board consideration and potential approval for the purposes of funding and identified scope of Phase One and/or Phase Two at the May 2024 town meeting. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 65, and Mashpee Bylaw 3-28, Town Council has stipulated that the Mashpee Sewer Commission is generally vested with all powers and duties to lay out, construct, maintain a system or systems of common sewers and main drains in public or private ways within the town. In conjunction with the Sewer Commission, the Select Board maintains purview and authority as the chief policymaking agency of the town to exercise planning and development functions for a prospective sewer/wastewater treatment system, including assessment of the financial and operational ramifications of such systems on the overall fiscal condition and general governmental operations of the town. In the opinion of Town Council, the Select Board has the authority to make policy determinations with respect to the prospective development of sewer and wastewater treatment systems within the town. In that spirit, I will soon produce menu-style options for review and deliberations so that the specific scope of the next phase or phases are clearly identified for further action and town meeting authorization in terms of design and subsequent funding. Tonight, I seek approval of the Select Board for all three identified professional goals that I've already listed with a clear direction to carry the described goals to completion and implementation to the best of my abilities. And for the record, that might be a little early than some of the other goals, but I think it's good timing. And for the purposes of today, I also had an operational meeting at 3:30 this afternoon. Included in that meeting was the Sewer Commission, not a quorum, by the way. I didn't find like the open meeting law. We also had GHD, EP, or Environmental Partners, Weston and Sampson, and other staff. What we would like to do is suggest that this so-called menu be brought back before this board by the July 17 meeting. And subsequent to that meeting, I would respectfully request a Select Board meeting with the Sewer Commission, a joint meeting, for what I would consider to be a workshop session, joint meeting, where it's the only item on the agenda. It may require a special meeting, but I think, obviously, if there's anything to justify it, it would be this. And at that meeting, hopefully, we can get all onto the same page relative to the scope. And then the rest of us will know exactly where we stand moving forward. But I don't want there to be any confusion. We already have a Phase One, a Phase Two, a Phase Three, a Phase Four, a Phase Five in an approved plan. But for the purposes of any further clarity in regards to where we're going to go in October and where we're going to go in May, it would be the time to discuss that at that particular time. And I know the Sewer Commission Chair is here, and I know Mike Drainville from GHD is here, and I appreciate your patience listening for the last hour.
Of course.
Appreciate you being here.
So would you like, do you want us to go to them before we address your one, two, and three?
I'm just looking for approval. Those are the, those are the priority goals.
You want that now?
I would love it right now. 7:35.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve his?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing you.
I have a question. Us approving moving forward doesn't limit us in any way. It just sets these goals up. Is that correct?
No, it doesn't end the goals. It just makes those the priorities.
Okay. That's it.
I'll start with you.
Yes.
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 That was easy. So with that said, Mark Drainville, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Chad Smith, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're part of that mission and the goals, so I'll hand it over to you.
All right. I'll just say quick that in the wake of Ray Jack's passing, the support from the Town Manager's Office was immediate, and it was a full-court press. It was impressive, and we were all involved in this scope that we were developing. We all took a little piece of what Mr. Jack could do. None of us can fill his shoes, but I've never been more impressed at how quickly this came together. I approve of the entire plan the Town Manager has laid out, and I was also involved with Ms. Harris, to our Vice Chair, being able to come up with a plan we all had inclusion in agreement with. There are options from Phase One that have not been included or finished, and there are a lot of options in the multitude of Phase Two that we have outlined, and this is the time where we come together, look at everything, and take that inclusive approach.
Yeah, I just want to start by offering my condolences for passing of Ray. I mean, he was a tremendous benefit to the town in getting everything started here, and we're all going to be banding together to continue the foundation that he started here. But, and with that said, we're all on the same page proceeding forward. We're going to be providing the town with, as Mr. Collins said, a menu of options to proceed forward, and we're ready to, you know, to take this to the next step.
That's great. That's it, right? Awesome.
I'm sure we'll have questions later.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm ready. I think everyone's ready to roll up the sleeves and get right into it, so thank you very much.
One last thing. The menu that was described by the Town Manager, it's really appropriate to call it that because families today, they sit down and they decide what they can afford each night, so that's what we're going to do.
Well said.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to jump into public comment, and the reason why we put public comment after that is because if your answers, if you had something to do regarding wastewater and you feel that that answered those questions, to know that we're taking this seriously. So I'll go back to the list. If you'd like to still speak in public comment, I do ask, keep it brief. You don't have to take the full three minutes, but you don't even have to come up if you don't need to. That being said, Susan Dangle.
I'll pass tonight.
She'll pass.
Thank you. Jonathan Small.
I will also pass.
Thank you. Dr. Jane Singer.
I choose to pass.
Thank you. Mary Wagon.
Mary Wagon, 35, Asshument Road, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the Cape Cod Commission has announced that they're holding their One Cape Summit on July 31st and August 1st at the Waquahit Resort in Howard. This annual two-day regional forum will address housing, water quality, economic, and climate changes of Cape Cod. Sound familiar? I encourage you all to attend. Residents and local community groups, you should consider it too. You can register at onecape.capecodcommission.org. See you there.
Thank you, Mary. Glenn McCarthy.
I'm going to have three people with me who are not going to speak. I'm Glenn McCarthy, 16G Place, and the folks here are representatives from the Citizens for the Protection of Waquahit Bay, which many of you may be familiar with, is a organization in town that's existed since the 80s. It was initially formed to protect Washburn Island, which it did. I got involved with CPWB a couple of years ago, and am a special project lead. I think a number of these guys are board members as well. And we're here today to reinforce what was said about the importance of Phase Two Sewering, that we fully support, meeting the 11th, August 11th deadline, and the state revolving funds. We, it's interesting, we're in the Waquahit Room, and, you know, I talk a lot about Poppin' Esset Bay, but if you know me, I actually grew up closer to Waquahit Bay. And we talk a lot about the ponds, but Waquahit Bay in 1979 was designated as an area of environmental concern due to its extraordinary natural resources. It's a really important bay in the town. It hasn't had a lot of discussion. Hang on, and I'll quote David Howes, as David, you just, Brian Howes, as David, you just did, "The Quashnet River is the poster child for the worst water quality, worst habitat quality in Mashpee, and in fact, probably the most of the south shore of the Cape." So, you know, our message is Waquahit Bay and any sewer plan needs to be a priority. That watershed is critically important. And the last thing I'll mention that we need everyone's help with is to finish the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Falmouth and Mashpee over who's responsible for how much nitrogen loading into each of the bays. So we're just here to, and while it's half East Falmouth and it's half Mashpee, so it's Mashpee residents and East Falmouth residents trying to help restore Waquahit Bay. So we would love to have your support as we move forward on that. Good? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glenn.
Thank you.
Lynn Barbie.
Hi, Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I have a couple of items, but the first thing I want to say is I really want to thank Town Manager Collins for coming up with this proposal that he just made. Makes a lot of sense to me, and I think, as everybody is reeling from the loss of Ray Jack, who, he always had a smile for me and some funny joke or something, but I've been really supportive of that process, and I really look forward to attending meetings and contributing in any way that I can. And the only other thing I want to say is I really want to thank the town for a really wonderful fireworks exhibit on Friday night, and I want to thank the Historical Commission for that amazing event yesterday, and the wall that we have and the speakers. It was really, as a daughter of a military man, I really appreciated it, and I want to thank everybody who had a role in both of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. McElvy.
First, I want to give my condolences to the board and to Mr. Collins and his staff and to Ray Jack and his family. Bless him. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for the taxpayers. $66 million you've already spent on the sewers. 66 million. Tonight, looks like you're going to ask for a lot more. And where's that money coming from? It's coming off the backs of taxpayers. They have a real impact in this town. We're getting no federal money, it looks like. We're getting no state money. There's no one rescuing us. There's no grants coming from anywhere that I hear about. So it's going to come off the backs of a lady I met today who's lived in this town 35 years and told me she has to sell her house and leave because her taxes gone up $138 a month. And that may not be a lot to some of you, but people work a regular nine-to-five job. It is a lot, and you need to be aware of that, that people have to make choices. And you've got to remember, this sewer system, the septic sewer system thing we're putting in, I have to tell you, it's a 30-year plan. 30 years. And you're not ready, I don't believe, to go to August 11th and ask for more money. You should wait, and you should be able to look at the situation with a clear head and get a new person to fill in the shoes of Ray Jack before you go forward. That's exactly what I think. I think we need that person to be a clerk of the works, to make sure that money is being spent wisely and there's no overages. That's an important thing as well. We need to bring balance back to this conversation. You wait a year, it's not going to impact greatly a 30-year plan that we're in. Balance is important, and if we don't bring balance to this town, I have to tell you, I'm worried about this town because it's the taxpayers that need to be represented here. All of you passed Mr. Collins' proposal tonight, which is wonderful proposals, and I support wastewater and I support all that stuff, but you didn't talk about the impact it's going to have on the taxpayer. There's no discussion about that. They pay the bills. This woman's going to have to leave because of the situation, and other people will have to leave too. Some of you you may know. If we don't bring balance back to this town, we're going to lose a lot more. You won't be able to get a septic system put in, an addition done. You're going to have to ask for permission to cut your grass. Is that what we want in this community? I say we need balance from all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. All right. Mr. Collins, you want to?
I just want to clarify a couple of points for the board. The menu option is designed to bring back options for you to study.
I don't think you need to explain.
But I really think it's important for you to understand and for the folks out there to understand that I wasn't seeking any particular request.
For money.
Tonight, for money.
Right.
The whole purpose is to bring the menu options back. Call me an expensive waiter. I'm going to bring you a menu, and you're going to be able to look at the menu. That's the whole purpose of tonight. And the other thing is, for the checks and balances, I should have made it mentioned earlier, but I just want you to know that the OPM, Weston and Sampson, is fulfilling that role on a temporary basis until we fill, not that we'll be able to, but attempt to fill the shoes of. So I don't want you to think that there's no checks and balances for the invoices coming in. That's not accurate. There are checks and balances, and they've been put into effect immediately as a result of the discussion that I had with Mike and his staff, and I just want you to know that.
I think the board's perfectly clear on what we adopted.
I understand.
Yep.
I guess I want to.
We're good.
Very clear.
Thank you for that, but we'll jump right into, you're next up for the administrative investigation status.
Yes. I'm not prepared to deliver a report to you this evening because I've been busy with some other things.
Yep.
But.
Enough said, and.
Well.
I understand.
Yeah, but I will say that it appears, based upon all of the interviews based from the individuals who were at the meeting and had some knowledge of the situation, there's no violation of any rules, regulations, policies, or procedures, ethics, or laws, which does not mean that the board can't revise or amend or adopt other policies as a result of the administrative investigation itself. I should have a report to you, hopefully, if not at the next meeting, at the subsequent meeting, but there are a couple of things that I think that are worthy to bring to your attention this evening. Number one, Don Thayer, who is a member presumed right now, I have found that you actually accepted her resignation and then rescinded it, but I didn't realize this until I started looking into these things. The rescinding of the resignation was after the effective date of the resignation. So for the purposes of process, I think we have a little bit of a problem there, and I'm not blaming anybody in particular. I'm just saying it's something that I felt had to be brought to the board's attention, and I'm also not blaming any member of the board or boards in general, but in the past, some of these appointments to the CPC were, I think, made at the same time as the liaison assignments, and it should have been a board decision that should have stood on its own. So all I'm recommending is, from this point forward, and I know I discussed this with you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
From this point forward, when the board does make a selection for CPC and the Capital Improvement Program Committee, CIP, and a couple of others, I think that should be a vote of the board and not necessarily an assignment from the chair. And for the purposes of tonight, I'll just leave it at that because it's 10 of 8, and you've got much longer.
I want to clarify that when we get to it anyways.
Yes. Sorry for taking so much time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right. So update on the residential tax exemption and setting the tax rate. Assessing Director Joseph Gibbons. You stuck it out, huh?
Yep. It's tough when you get up at 5:30. Good evening. I'm going to take the, if I may, the two topics in reverse order here. One is pretty straightforward, the other is less straightforward. As far as the setting of the tax rate, I went back and looked, the last four or five years, the Town of Mashpee has had their classification hearing around Thanksgiving, either the week of Thanksgiving or the week after. At the urging of the Department of Revenue, I've been on webinars with them, they've been urging the last few years, due to staffing and a lot of other issues, they would prefer to see tax rates being set earlier. So I've taken the bull by the horns. I met with Don Thayer, the Finance Director, and Craig Mayen, and they're aware of it. What we'd like to do this year is move it up to early November. It gives us a lot more flexibility with everything. The Town Manager's Office is aware of that. Terry has penciled in, I believe it's November 6th, as the potential date for classification this year. It's a few weeks earlier, and it should benefit the town and the DOR and all parties involved. And we're not in a certification year like we were last year, and we already have the residential exemption, so it's not our first year, it's not our first rodeo with that. So we should be able to do that.
Great.
So that's the second issue. The first issue is the residential exemption. Where we stand with this, I'm going to give a brief recap of last year very quickly. I'll go over that, and then I can give some input as far as what has changed since we had classification last year. Unfortunately, most of the data that we need, we will not have until the fall. So it's way too early to be making any assumptions based on not having that data. And each year is a separate snapshot with different values, different areas going up different amounts, and that all affects the exemption and who can get it, who can benefit from it more, and all that. So basically, last year, the Town of Mashpee adopted a residential exemption of the minimum of 5%. It was $33,268 off all qualified applicants, which resulted in $233.21 of a discount on domiciliary properties. This adoption by the Select Board created an increase in the residential tax rate to 701 from what would have been our natural tax rate of $6.94. So it was a seven-cent increase across the board for residential taxpayers. Commercial, industrial, and personal property, properties remained at the natural tax rate of 694. Our office received almost 2,600 residential applications, of which 2,434 were approved for FY '23. When we set the, when we went to classification, we only had 2,109. So we received 325 after we had classification, meaning that those 325 were not factored into the tax rate, and that those will be factored in this year. So that was a delta of 325. And I can't predict how many more on top of that may file.
Will file.
Starting July 1st. And I can do a little PR here, starting July 1st, we will be accepting applications for new filers. People who received it last year do not have to file.
So if that's the case, in the fall, when we talk about this again, you will have those more updated numbers as far as, at that point?
We will, but it'll only be from July 1st through September or whatnot.
When is the cutoff date? You'll start July 1st, when is it end?
I'd like to have a soft cutoff date of September 1st. Last year, we pushed it out because it was the first year to the first weekend in November, and this year, we will not be doing that. That was only because it was the virgin year with the residential exemption. So as I said earlier, it's very difficult to estimate how many people are going to file and what the values are going to be and everything. The assessors recommend that taxpayers who have not been previously approved file their applications prior to the early fall cutoff. That both, that helps the town in a big way because it gives us clarity as far as how many people we have, and it also protects our overlay because any applications that would come in after the September 1st deadline come out of the overlay until April 1st, and that's a long window there from September 1st until April 1st. And those are one-time hits to the overlay. According to DOR statisticians, an increase in the residential exemption percentage will most likely result in more applicants due to the increased value of the exemption. And that's pretty straightforward. I spoke with the DOR's top statistician, and he said that in the 16 communities that have this, when they increase the percentage, they get more applications because there aren't, there are some people out there that, you know, don't want to give their 1040 out for $200, but if it's worth 500 or more, you know, they may. On the handout that I gave you, I gave you a copy of the new application for FY '24. It's very similar to the '23 one. There were a couple of minor, minor changes to that. Also, on the other page, there's a breakdown of the 2,434 approved applications that we had, and the breakdown, obviously, the majority are in Class 101, which is single-family homes, condos, the 102 class, were second with 755. And then there's a few in the miscellaneous categories after that, resulting in 2,434. The other thing I'd like to bring up tonight that we, data that I have now, and I was surprised The other thing I'd like to bring up tonight that we, data that I have now, and I was surprised, to be perfectly honest with you, two years ago, when my predecessor, Jason Strebel, ran the statistics of the Mashpee billing addresses, zip codes. Mashpee on the residential properties that could qualify for the residential exemption was 57% domiciliary to 43% non-domiciliary. Now, when I ran it this morning to get very current numbers, we've changed 5%. And I think some of that's due to COVID. Some of that may be due to we have a residential exemption now, and maybe where their other property is, they don't. We're now up to 6238. So 62% of our residential tax bills with dwellings on them are now domiciliaries, and 38% are non-domiciliaries. This makes it harder and harder to, you know, to the residential exemption. I was surprised that it changed 5%. So we'll be better able to discuss all this in the fall. I may have some numbers, I should have some numbers in September, and then we will have the full packet in October for the November, early November, classification hearing.
Okay. Mr. Gibbons, I have one question that I brought up at last year's meeting, and my question is, is it possible, because I know this was a new process, is it possible to add to the exemption non-resident investment property that shows proof of year-round, that their property is used as a year-round rental? So I believe it happens in other towns, whether it's in our state or not, but...
Province Town does it.
Okay.
That's the one that I'm aware of.
Is that exemption possible for us to consider in the fall? Or better yet, can you consider that possibility and think on it?
I will.
If that could be presented to us, I would like to have that board consider that.
Yeah, that, the difficulty with that is the timing. You need, you need a good bit of time to do that because you have to, you know, put out an application. And prior to that, I believe you have to get state approval of that with a home rule petition, I believe.
Could you investigate the...
I will, I will. I can call Pete Towns. I know that Greg, the assessor there.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I actually have some questions. Thanks so much, Joe. I was thinking, as we're thinking about soaring, we're thinking about cost, we're thinking about the menus that are coming forward, it probably also a good time to at least put an increase in the residential tax on the table. So in order to do that, I'm wondering what your timeline would be like for getting us all of the data we would need so we're not making the decision at the 11th hour, so we can make it with transparency, so voters and residents can hear our thoughts, come and attend a meeting. So could we work backwards?
Well, that's how we operate. We work backwards from the mailing of the tax bills. That's how municipal finance works. And one of the reasons we're moving the classification hearing up is to try to give us, you know, more time, more time to get that done. But that being said, we rely on our vendor, and we rely on the DOR to approve our LA forms, our LA 15, which is our non-certification year valuation forms, and the new growth and whatnot. And I'm pushing to get those in in early to mid-September so that I then can have time to get the data together, to come up with the charts, and come up with all of that.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Because, and if you've mentioned the dates, I didn't jot them down, so I apologize. In order for us, if we chose to, to look at a different residential tax exemption, when would this board have to do that?
Well, it's done in the public hearing at the classification hearing.
Okay.
When he comes back in to talk, that's when we're going to talk about options and...
And you'll have, and you'll have all those options for us?
Yes, like I did last year, but this year it would be earlier.
Okay. I just think it's a large topic. We want to ensure that we're making the best possible decision. We want to be thinking about taxes and all the different options to help pay for whatever soaring we can afford. So to be able to have a couple of meetings and not have to make a quick decision, I just think would be really useful for all of the residents and certainly for the decision-makers moving forward.
Well, I'll do my best to get you, the Select Board, the, all the data, you know, maybe not like last year, get it a week before for the packet or whatever, what is it normally for the Selectmen's meeting?
Twice a month.
Yeah, when do they get the data?
Thursday.
For the, for the Monday meeting?
Yeah, it would be Thursday.
Okay. Maybe I can get it to you a couple of weeks in advance, but I wouldn't be able to get it much more than that. Because if you look at the calendar, you know, there's a lot of factors that could go into this because we have the growth. The growth has to go into the DOR. The DOR looks at it. They come back, they approve it, or they make recommendations, we have to change something. Normally, mine gets approved. It gets approved, okay? Then we have to advertise classification. We have to advertise it for two weeks. You know, we have to have public disclosure. It's really a pretty tight timeline. But I will do what I can to get you those sheets. And if you have recommendations as to, you know, which percentages you want, last year I did, I believe, 5, 10, and 20.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if down the line, in September, you have a specific request, you know, I can probably meet that request.
We'll get with you in, you know, prior to, and so you can do the work that you need to do.
But I'm just letting Michaela know that it's a pretty tight timeline based on our vendor, the Department of Revenue, the laws with public disclosure, and advertising the classification hearing. It's, it's just the nature of it. It's, you know, I'm not being obstructive or, you know...
No, I just want to, I understand and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you talking us through this tonight, and I appreciate your willingness to get it to us as quickly as possible. I just want to ensure we have the time to transparently make a decision that's crystal clear to residents, whatever decision that is.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
It would be helpful, I'm sorry. It would be helpful if the board gave us some percentages that they were interested in looking at.
That's...
And then, and then I will get together with the assessor and then make sure that you have whatever it is that you're seeking, that information as soon as possible.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, you know, to Michaela's point, I was wondering if, because I too missed all the deadlines. I heard July 31st, you'll start taking applications.
July 1st.
July 1st, rather. And then September 1st, that's the cutoff?
It's a soft cutoff, yeah.
Soft cutoff. Now, you also mentioned that you have to have the assessments into DOR for approval, the reports for assessments?
Yes.
And when do you get an answer back on those typically?
Well, it's a multi-step process, David. There's the growth assessments, and then there's the LA 15, which is the interim year, non-certification year approval of the values. So I'm going to try to get the growth in early September?
But you won't get the information, the results of that back to where you can provide us with detailed approved data until...
I'm shooting, I'm shooting for...
Early October?
October 15th at the latest.
And we have to have it in by November?
We have to have classification by November 6th. That's what we're planning on.
Classification by November 6th.
I mean, for years, it's always been, come in, we need to...
Make a decision.
We need to review and vote and approve at that meeting.
Yeah, and I'd like to ask, if I could at this time, for some flexibility, I'm going to do the best I can, but I need flexibility from the five of you. I've been in other towns where we need to have a second meeting, you know, continue it and have it in three days or in a week. If we're going to need some flexibility on dates from you, I can't have, you know, locked-in dates that are two weeks and then, you know, I was in one town where there were three Mondays, and they met on Mondays, there were three Mondays in the month, and we went three weeks for a continuance on that. You're going to really hurt the taxpayer, you're going to hurt the treasurer-collector. I just don't think a lot of people understand the import of the dates on these things.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think we're going to have, again, we've already done the exemption last year, so I think last year was really a lot of the heavy lift. I think this time it's going to be a discussion of 10%. Do we do 15%? Do we keep it at 5? That's my guess, is that's what we're going to be looking at.
And I would agree. I just, you know, because of the tight window on that, October, we'll get the results back, so we'll have definitive data in October, and then it has to be in by November 6th, you know what I mean? That's a tight window. You only have two meetings essentially. So we got to provide very crystal-clear clarity on what we need to make decisions in a timely way if we're going to implement anything. Because I mean, from what I understand, from last year's data, you know, we went with, I think, 5, 5, we jumped to 15 and then 20.
5, 10, and then 20, I think.
I gave you 5, 10, and 20 last year.
So if, so if you, if the board's okay, we'll ask right now, if, does 5, 10, 15, 20 sound good?
And then I think Province Town, Province Town's at the max of 35?
I don't know what Pete Boston said, 35, I know.
I would, I would like to see what 25 and 30 look like. We don't need to go with those, but I think it's important, I don't know how we say we're putting everything on the table if we don't have all the information. So we may look at the figures and decide that those, that larger exemption makes no sense and that we need to look at something else.
Agreed. Let me just ask, Joe, because I, Joe, if you just don't, are you plugging in, in a matrix, 20%, and here's your, it spits out a number?
No.
There's a lot more work...
This is, this is an unbelievably complex thing. There's no, there's nothing you can just do, you know, to punch in one number and get all those scenarios. We have to hand do, how many properties are between this and this? How many are between this and, it's...
But you already have the spreadsheet from last year.
We do.
So you just have to substitute the numbers with new numbers, right? And it should auto-populate. It's not, I'm just saying that you're not...
No, because all the numbers change.
You're not recreating a new spreadsheet to do the calculations. You have last year's spreadsheet.
Yes, but by hand, we have to go in and say, how many properties are between 450,000 and 460? Between 460 for each scenario and each, it, believe me, it's...
Could I make a suggestion? Could we put this on the next Select Board meeting for us to discuss what percentages we'd like to see?
That's fine.
That would be helpful. Then we can give Joe the numbers he needs. It won't be as cumbersome, but I don't think we could, we're not prepared to do that tonight, right?
Other than that, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just so we can move forward. Mr. Gibbons, you all, you all set with us? Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, no problem at all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and approval of end-of-year transfers. Finance Director Don Thayer. Thanks for hanging out.
So tonight, I have three end-of-year transfers for three different departments. I don't know if you want me to go one by one and explain kind of a little bit of background...
Aberth's coming from and where's it going?
Yes, and these end-of-year transfers are allowed by law. When we vote our omnibus budget, we actually separate our salaries and our expenses on the, on the budget. We are not allowed to spend salary funds for expenses or vice versa. So what happens at the end of the fiscal year, sometimes a department might have a deficit in their expenses, have some funds available in their salaries, they have to come to you and the Finance Committee to ask permission to adjust their budgets, lower their salaries, increase their expenses, or vice versa. So that's the situation that we have here. In the past, before this was allowed by law, we would have to raise any deficits on our following year's tax recap. And that just complicates everything because now you're eating into your next year's tax levy and making less funds available. So the first one, I don't know what you have in front of you, I'm going to start with the treasurer. He's requesting that you transfer a total of $4,850. He has listed multiple accounts, and he is asking for a transfer into his postage and his other purchase of services expense. Those are for the tax bills. The other purchase of services is the printing of the bills, and the postage, obviously, is for the mailing of the bills. Those costs have increased significantly. As you know, we do our budgets so far in advance that they're really, you know, departments are doing their best to estimate what they believe they'll need in their budgets. Unfortunately, there are times like this that costs go up more than they can absorb, and that's the situation that we're in here. So he's requesting that you transfer the total of $4,850 from the accounts listed to the accounts.
Would the board feel, be okay with making a motion to approve the amount of transfer of $4,850 with the, with the transfer of the numbers listed as read?
So move. Second.
All right, motion, first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, yes.
Aye. All right, that's the first one.
The next one is the DPW in the transfer station. As you know, the transfer station, the costs have increased, the transfer station, and the town manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but the transfer station contract goes from January through December, and that's always tricky when you're on a fiscal year. So again, she does her best to estimate, but we're never sure when the budgets are set, what that transfer station contract is going to be. So in this situation, she does have several positions that have gone unfunded for FY ' '23. She's requesting that you transfer a total of $22,412 from her salary account to her transfer station accounts. She has one that's the local transfer contract, which is the contract that I mentioned that runs from January through December, and then the other is to her recycling account, which we're just hoping that there's more people recycling, and that's why there's more funding needed for that, so...
Can I also have a motion to approve the transfer from $22,412 into two separate accounts of $19,112 and $3,300?
So move.
Okay. First and second. Any questions, any comments? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 Emma, yes. Okay, back to, in our notes, back to number two.
The final one is for the Police Department, and if you'd like, what I did for the Finance Committee, Captain Rose did email, send an email to me, kind of explaining why he is requesting the transfer. If you'd like, I can read that, just so you have a little bit of a background. If you'd like, I can read that, just so you have a little bit of a background and it's not just me explaining why they need the transfer. They're requesting funds, $20,000 be transferred from their dispatcher salary account to their police overtime account. And this is what Captain Rose sent in an email. He said, "We are expecting a potential deficit in police salaries at the end of fiscal year. Currently, we are looking at approximately a $7,000 deficit. However, with upcoming vacation leave, the community picnic, and any unexpected major crime investigations, this deficit number could increase." And this was, he sent this email in May, just so you have a little bit of an idea of how far back it was. "We are currently projecting to turn back approximately $50,000 in dispatch salaries." And I believe that's because of either retirements, positions that remain unfilled. "Is it possible to make a year-end transfer from the dispatcher salary account to police salaries? We would anticipate the transfer being no more than approximately $20,000 if needed. Please be advised that we have and will continue to scrutinize over time and only approve what is contractual and/or absolutely necessary in terms of major crime investigation. We will ensure that any potential transfer is kept to a minimum. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me."
Okay. I don't have any questions if anybody else doesn't. Can I have a motion to approve the amount of transfer of $20,000 from dispatcher salary to police overtime salary?
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Not hearing any, Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And what I can do, I can leave these with the assistant town manager. They just need your signature. I need original copies. And there are two of each, just so everyone is aware.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What's that? I know, I know. Discussion and certification of the hiring process of the following as firefighters, EMTs, Keith Birch, Jessica O'Kane, Nicholas Hill, Gary Celeste, and Fire Chief John Phelan.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, the policies and procedures of the town we're yet to.
A motion to approve. Second.
And this is to authorize?
This is just a certification.
Okay. Of all?
Of the process.
Of the process, of Keith Birch, Jessica O'Kane, Nicholas Hill, Gary Celeste, and Fire Chief John Phelan.
No.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Phelan's approving.
He is approving, yeah.
He's the one that you should have him.
Yeah, that's right.
So moved.
Hopefully, he's already certified.
I hope.
Second. Hopefully.
First, second?
Second.
Second. Wait for first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's unanimous. All right.
These poor people.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the wait.
It's now $650.
Yeah. Come on up.
Tom?
A public hearing notice.
Mm-hmm. You have to, want me to read it?
It's great to see town in action.
Pursuit to Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law is the Select Board, acting as local licensing authority for the town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the application Chin 1688, Inc., doing business as Saga Hibachi, for a new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license located at 36 South Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Said hearing will be held on Monday, June 22nd, at 8:25 in the walkway meeting room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, per order of the Mashpee Select Board. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ted Chilling, attorney from Ossito, Mass., representing the petitioner. This is Huling Chin, who is the president and manager of the corporation. Is Chin 1688, Inc., and doing business as Saga Hibachi. And it's in 36 South Street, what's that, that's South?
South Cape.
Yeah, South Cape.
Brighten's Cape Village.
So she has a great deal of experience. I've represented for 10 years. And I think it's going to be a very good thing for Mashpee.
Something's been needed there for a long time.
Yeah.
Well, she has successful restaurants, so I think this one will be too.
Good.
I don't have any questions or objections.
She never had a violation, she never had a violation, nothing, so it's.
I think it's a great idea, but anybody else have any?
I don't.
To the public hearing, anybody from the public have any need to say about the subject?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. First, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to approve the new annual all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license, Chin 1688, Inc., doing business as Saga Hibachi.
Second.
Thank you.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 I'm a yes.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck.
We'll see you this.
Worth the wait. Very glad that happened. All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Discussions and approval of the following resignations and appointments. Resignation from the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee, Lynn Harris. Term expires June 30th, 2025.
A motion to approve with regret. Second. Lynn Harris, Mashpee Community Garden.
All right, first and second. Tires to meet, tires community. All right, any other discussion? Not hearing any? Mr. Whedon?
Send a letter. Appreciation.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Also, appointment to the zoning board of appeals, member-at-large Sharon Zangler? Zanglier? Term expires June 30th, 2024.
26.
It says 24.
Says 24.
Why have it 26 here?
Mine says 26.
Yeah, oh, there it's, on the minute, on the agenda, it's 24. Is it, do we just?
You just approve.
I don't know. It appears to be a typo and I don't know.
The agenda says 24, but this says 26.
Yeah, right.
Do we?
I think we can go ahead.
Point it to 20 or?
I think if you just approve it subject to the term.
Clarification.
Yeah, to the term that it is supposed to be based on whatever the record shows. Once we research it, then we'll get it squared away.
So moved.
Second.
Term expiration.
Yes.
Yes.
With the term expiration.
Was there only, I'm assuming?
She was an associate member. She's just moving. She was an associate, now she's just moving up.
Do they still have to provide the recommendation? I mean, to hear from the committee, I mean, shouldn't there?
That's why they brought it forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This was the same issue we discussed at the last meeting with regard to policy 001.
Yeah, and that's what I, and I do remember, that's why I'm stopping now, because I.
It says the ZBA voted all in favor to promote.
But we really need to start requiring that they present the information consistently, consistently from all the boards and committees with the strongly recommend, recommended, recommended with hesitation, not recommended, so that there's consistency.
I agree with that.
That way, we have, you know, a sheet, there's a standardized way of looking at it and understanding it, no ambiguity, you know, where this.
And we should, I agree in.
That the fire department.
So in the wake of that, Mr. Chair, why don't we do this? Why don't we go back and find out exactly what the term is? And then secondly, say, look, we need a little bit additional information for the select board, consistent with policy 001.
And follow the same, yep.
And then I guess the only other question is, you know, was it posted?
Yes.
So there was opportunity for others to submit letters of interest?
That's my understanding. I mean, did I see the posting? I did not.
All right, so we'll put this off till whenever their next meeting, if it falls into the next meeting or the meeting after that, whenever the zoning board needs again. But if they can just clarify it was posted and the dates of the term.
Yep.
And then they can come, bring it back. Is everybody's board good with that?
There's no issue on time.
I am good with that. I just want to bring our attention to policy 001. And it's more than, it's more than just having the chart. I didn't, I wasn't here when the policy was put into place. If we want to make amendments to it, we want to change it in any way. I'm totally fine with that.
No, I think we should keep it still.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then there are issues with regard to the procedure. There are two pages of procedures. They're led at A through E. And there's an issue in A, B, and D. The process becomes time-consuming for the committee, but there are procedural omissions in this that are not just limited to the chart. So again, if we want to change policy 001 in some way, I'm fine with that. I just want us to, if we're keeping it as a policy, we all agree it's the best policy. I want us to adhere to it with consistency.
So were you talking about procedural?
The interview process.
There's, yes, A is screening. Let me see, I had it somewhere. Brought the policy if I can find it.
The town manager or his or her designee shall review the interested applicant pool and refer all applicants to the appropriate board, commission, committee, or council chairperson. The board of selectmen will be provided with copies of all application materials. The board, commission, committee, or council on which the vacancy exists should interview all applicants unless it is totally impractical. It is the responsibility of the board, commission, committee, or council chairperson to coordinate the scheduling of each interview and to notify the board of selectmen as to the time and location of each interview. It is strongly recommended that the selectmen's liaison to the board, commission, committee, or council in which the vacancy exists, have the opportunity to participate in the interview process. All provisions of the open meeting law shall be adhered to. That's screening. Then it goes on to the initial review process.
But the chair of the board, committee, commission.
And then interview as well.
Yeah, but that's a lot of discussion about when you have multiple candidates. You only have one candidate.
It's, but it's very clear, John. It says after the review of any candidate. So the policy may be flawed. I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't, we shouldn't make adjustments to the policy, but it's clear. It's, so.
So what didn't they follow? So if it's posted and there's only one candidate?
Yep.
I understand if there's multiple candidates, you're right, there's an absolute, and they have to do the recommendation. So they didn't do, they said all in favor, that's wrong. So they have to do highly, strongly recommend, back to that. But when you post it and you have one candidate and they strongly recommend, I mean, you got to go with some intent.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. But if you're making that case, then the policy needs to be clear and specific. Then the policy should say somewhere here, if there's more than one candidate, here's the policy. It doesn't. So it's difficult to know. What I worry about is taking any policy and saying, this is the policy of the board. We all adhere to this policy. And then adhere to it sometimes. I think, I think that puts you in, really, I think it puts the town in jeopardy. So I'm not arguing that this is the right policy. I'm not. But if this is it, then we need to follow it. And it doesn't say if there are more than, if there's more than one. It says the, any candidate. It specifies that the selectmen should know when interviews are. It specifies, and again, this has nothing to do with the ZBA or this person. It's the policy.
Yeah, so I'm just still, we're going to go back to the zoning board to say, okay, they're going to clarify if it was posted. They're going to, they need to revote according to strongly recommend, recommend, and that part. And we're going to clarify the term. Beyond that, what can we clarify to the zoning board that is, that they have to do different?
I would suggest we send all of the chairs of boards this policy, if this is the policy we choose to follow.
Well, no, we have to follow the policy. Because the policy is, right now, that's, that's the policy.
Then they would need to go through the steps of the policy if this is the policy we have. And you can't, we can't.
But I'm wondering, where she's already been an associate member for quite a few years. She's just been waiting for an opportunity for us. I mean, do you bring somebody up, still have to go through all that?
It doesn't, it doesn't say that you, you're excluded if you're a sitting member. It doesn't stipulate that. It doesn't, it doesn't give that clarity.
No, but I mean, as long as it was, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I'm just looking for the intent. I mean.
I understand.
If the policy was, if the position was posted, I think that's, and there was only one candidate, what are the, it's an associate member, what are they?
I certainly can't speak for this board, nor would I attempt to. But I can tell you that when that policy was drafted, I remember then, select board member Gottlieb wanted the candidates in front of the board because he did not want a commission or a committee making the decision for him.
Right. So again, we.
But that policy was also drafted at a time when that language that's being referenced, which is, I think, a little old, but I have to research it. But at the time, I remember somebody suggesting that the committee, the council, or the commission should have some involvement in it. But there's an argument, and I think it's a policy decision because it is your policy, that there's an argument that that group should not have their say because then it turns into, I don't want to say the good old boy club or the good old woman club, but it's just a situation where, I don't know what I'm trying to say.
No, I get it, I get it. That's where the point is.
To prevent cronyism to.
Correct. And it's, you know. That's why we're getting away from the yes and no and it's the.
I think there's danger either way. I think there was some merit to these groups having some involvement. But then there are those very intelligent folks who would argue, and I'm not saying do this or do that. I'm just telling you that I've heard arguments on both sides. And one of the arguments is that it can become very clicky if the group is sending it to the board with a, with a recommendation. But I do know that regardless, that policy that sits before you was designed to get some preliminary review from that committee or commission. And then the final decision was made by you folks based on that strongly recommended, recommended, or recommended with hesitation. And you didn't get to see the not recommended.
Right.
And by the way, I got to brush up on that, Selectman Whedon, because I think you cited the town manager and I've never even seen him.
So for me, you know, I don't have, I don't have issue with the policy even as it's written. I think that, you know, from my understanding, I guess, and interpretation of it, is they're providing a recommendation. You know, it's ultimately up to us.
Correct.
And so, you know.
Yes.
I go back to the screening process where, you know, the, so the town manager is designated, shall review interested applicant pool and referral. The board of selectmen will be provided with copies of all application materials. I'd love to have all application materials, you know, for any submitted letters of interest, a company, any kind of, you know, documents that were going to be approved. And I'd want to see their recommendations. I'd even like to see the questions asked of them in the interviews. And anybody that's sat on the board as alternate, they're going to give some really comprehensive answers to the questions. You know, what kind of answer, questions are they offering? You know, that kind of stuff will help me make my decision, you know, on whether or not they are the best person for the job, you know, as a recommendation from that committee. I mean, I don't see. I mean, I don't see it as hurting the process to have all that information in front of you.
No, I agree. I mean, we do have to clear this process up.
This is what I would suggest, Mr. Chair. I would suggest that all board members come back to the next meeting, and we'll put it on the agenda for review of Policy 001. You come back with your notes, and then whatever they are, they're a public document. Anybody can hear what your notes are and have a copy of them. We'll take the notes, and we'll try to incorporate it into a document and bring it back to you, and then you can review it, and you can either revise it, amend it, repeal it, or do whatever you want with it because it's your policy. That's what I would suggest.
In the meanwhile, can you make sure that the zoning board gets the policy?
Well, we've got to make sure that, and I know that there are some folks here who have said, you know, we all need them, and I agree. The only problem that we're having right now is we're trying to collect these old policies that apparently exist that have confused people. So that's on my office. We're going to, and particularly, I got to make sure that every committee, commission, council, every department has a current updated policy of whatever the board has adopted. And they should be online, but apparently there is still some confusion because when they're revised, the revision doesn't always get duly recorded. So we're going to clear that up, and in the meantime, don't appoint anybody.
I guess to that end, I think it would be good practice to kind of have in the bottom of the document in the footer, a revision.
Yes.
Date and page so that you know what version you're working off of.
Yes.
On any documents that are posted on the town website, I think it would be helpful.
Yes.
We'll have to put this appointment of the Deputy Shellfish Constable.
It's the same way, right?
Yeah, it's the same way.
I'm sorry.
Shellfish.
Shellfish Constable?
That's different. The reason why it's different is because these are appointments through the regular town process, but there's a state statute that says it's the select board, so I don't want there to be any technicality. They've already been appointed through the town process, but I don't want somebody to say, well, there's a state statute that exists that says it's supposed to be appointed by the select board even though the manager's the appointing authority. So I bring it before you just to basically affirm what I've already done.
Yeah, these are officers. These aren't committee.
And they're already employed.
They're already employed.
Yeah.
They're already employed, and these requests are coming at the DNR director to make her job easier. So it's a little different because they've already gone through the screening process.
Sure.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve the Deputy Selfish Constable's Richard Santangilio?
Santangelo.
Santangelo. Tyler Grady and Christopher Lucier.
So moved. Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Unanimous. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of information I'd just like to offer on this topic. Very quick.
On what topic?
It's last meeting you did the renewal of the.
You should go to the mic if you're going to let us.
Can you go to the mic? It's brief, right?
Very brief.
Okay.
Lynn Barbie, actually Chair of the Human Services Committee, which is why I'm speaking. Last meeting you did the renewal of the appointments. Omitted from the Human Services Committee was a position which is the Board of Health agent. So we have the Recreation Director, Council on Aging Director, and we have the Board Agent, and that position was missing from your chart. So I would like that person to be, that position to be appointed because it was omitted, because we have a hard time getting our quorum lots of times anyway.
You can't do it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, but.
Right. Can you put it on the agenda for next time?
We'll get it on the agenda, and it'll be at your next.
We'll get it at the next.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. I like having my full committee.
All right, so we're on page two, right. Appointments and hearings. Discussion and approval of the following special events: temporary sign permits, one-day liquor licenses. La Tavola, August 4, 2023, 5:00 to 9:00, Steeple Street, Mashpee Chamber of Commerce.
A motion to approve La Tavola. Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Does that include a one-day liquor license?
Yes, that's what they're asking for.
But I guess I would frame it so that it includes liquor license because the way you framed it, it's just a special event, temporary sign permit, the way I heard it.
Yeah, that's exactly how it's in the agenda.
That's exactly the way it's in here, too. Board of Health approved.
I read the whole.
It's not that one I'm worried about. It's the head of the Ponds Regatta.
Right.
All right, special events, temporary. All right, so if I'm not reading off the agenda, you read off the permit.
The notice, I'd frame it as motion to approve La Tavola, August 4, 2023, special event permit, temporary sign permit, and one-day.
And one-day liquor license.
There we go.
So moved.
Liquor license, beer and wine.
Thank you.
As a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Michaela?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, and then next one is Annual Mashpee Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade, December 9, 2023, 5:30 to 7:30, Mashpee Chamber of Commerce.
And there's no liquor license. So moved.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right. Head of the Ponds Regatta, September 10, 2023, 5:30 to 10:30, Adequand Park, Allen Robinson. And what is that for? Just.
Board of Health approved, building approved, DPW said responsible for picking up litter, town will leave portable, side the beach, no department, fire department requirements, and police approved.
Mr. Chairman, I have two comments on that.
Can you come to the mic?
Yeah.
So I would not advise the town to approve a liquor license for that event because I think they're boating.
Oh, then there's no liquor.
There's no liquor. So the packet is 233 pages, and it wasn't posted by 1 o'clock today online, so I don't have that. So thank you for.
No.
The other thing is the splash happens on September 10. That's the Save Mashpee-Wake Beach Pond Alliance. So I didn't know if we have times set for the splash. The Regatta people are very, very nice. It's just with that overlap, it gets a little crowded at the parking lot. And it would be nice for these people to be notified that they need to kind of move out by a certain time because the splash comes in. And I don't know what times the events start.
5:30 to 10:30 AM.
Yeah, 5:30 in the morning.
To 10:30. I don't know what time the splash starts, but their boats are long, and they're beautiful, and they're expensive. So it was difficult for us to get our canoes out and our kayaks out just because the parking lot was like extreme.
What time is the splash, Mary?
I don't know, but if they.
Mr. Chair, but they didn't.
They weren't out by 10:30.
Mr. Chair, the splash is not on this agenda because they are not ready to make a commitment on time or what day. They said they were going to do it the same day. I don't know if they still are or not.
I'm just saying that by 10, yeah. By 10:30, the Regatta people are still using the parking lot. That's all.
I get it, but right now, yeah. Thank you, Mary.
So motion.
Could we, I have a little concern. I'm looking at, I'm looking at this page where it lists all of the different events we're approving, and it states under description, discuss an approval of the following special event, temporary sign permits, and one-day liquor licenses. So it's hard to know which ones we're approving the way it's written for liquor licenses. I understand, I mean, clearly, the Christmas parade is not requesting a liquor license, but it's, these events are listed under liquor licenses. So by approving the head of the Ponds Regatta, are we not approving a liquor license?
No.
Well, and again, in the motion, it's not, well.
You make it clear in the motion.
When the motion's, yeah, I see what you're saying.
As long as we make it clear in the motion, that's fine. Thank you.
We're doing it in the motion.
Mr. Chair, on these here, in each one, they're separated out to what they're requiring. And in the La Tavola, it says a special permit for sign and one-day liquor license.
I get it. It's just the top title.
In the Christmas parade, it does state a special permit, temporarily signed, and one-day liquor license, beer and wine. So if you turn to the second page and you look to the top of that, it's asking for beer and wine. And then if you look at the head of the ponds, it is not looking for.
Yeah, but that's.
We don't give a liquor license to the Christmas parade.
Well, I don't know if you do. That's what they're requesting. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we should get clarification on that one, then.
But it's not on, so I got a big problem because if that's, and it's not on the agenda. It's not listed that way on the agenda, but it's, if you, you know, reading, you know.
It's listed that way on my agenda.
But if you go into.
No.
It does list it that way, sir. On the top, it does say.
Well, no, but because that's, but that's more of a discussion about all three. So you're saying.
And then they're breaking them out, Mr. Chair, in this memo to those three.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, but if you say, all right, so head of the Charles, head of the Regatta also has a one-day liquor.
No, I'm not. No, if you go to page two.
No, I know.
The heading on the memo.
But the heading on the memo says the below are temporary sign permits, one-day liquor, and special events. So I'm just saying.
Can I make a suggestion? One of them is in December, the other's September. Why don't we table it tonight, or I should say, you table it tonight?
Yes.
And then we'll come back with a little additional information to get clarity.
So we.
While we're checking into Policy 001.
There's no rush to get this done tonight.
So can we, we have to.
Retake our motion back.
Motion to lay on the table.
Well, yeah, but we have to rescind the motion that was already given for.
If you approve, yep.
Annual Mashpee Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade. Correct?
Yes.
So.
And make the motion to rescind the motion of the.
To rescind.
Rescind the motion of the.
La Tavola?
No, the Mashpee Christmas Parade.
So do I, that's a first, and a second. Any other discussion?
See, when we go too late, we all get timed out. Yes.
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 And are you sticking with La Tavola, or are you going to change it for the same reason?
No, La Tavola can stay the same because they need that one-day liquor license.
Well, I understand that, but if you.
Yeah, I mean, because of the sake of time, we hear August 4. Is everybody good with?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, so the La Tavola's staying on, just so I know where I am.
Yes.
La Tavola's staying on, annual Mashpee Chamber, and head of the Ponds Regatta is tabled.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Communications and correspondence. Amended item petition with regard to the Mashpee Neck Road speed limit.
You don't have to do any action tonight or take any action tonight. Just making you aware of that because it did come in to you, and just going to check into that a little further with the DPW director. But you don't have to take any actions.
So we're good. Okay. All business. 2023, 2024, select board liaison assignments. Is there one correction?
There is a correction. Michaela's going to switch my Chamber of Commerce, Mashpee Chamber.
Chamber of Commerce is going to go over to Michaela. From Carol, Chamber of Commerce to Michaela.
Good.
Because she's doing all her events and meetings during the day, and I can't.
All right, I have it.
Can I have a motion approved with the one change?
A motion to. Is everything else okay?
You have Native American Affairs in two places.
Yep, always was.
Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Yep.
Always was.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
So can I have a motion approved, the.
Everything okay, David, with that?
Yeah.
Liaison appointments with the correction of Chamber of Commerce going over to Michaela.
Yes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 All right. Nomination discussions, approval of select board representative to the following. We got community, all right, so these are the four committees that for years, it seems were mixed and are intermingled with the liaison appointments. So going forward, every year after we reorg, these will be reappointed and voted on by the select board. And at this moment, there's four committees, so this will be the process going forward. And that kind of clarifies what Mr. Collins mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So further discussion, I'd like to take a nomination for the Community Preservation Act Committee.
I'd like to nominate Michaela Columbo to the CPC.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second? If not, do I have another motion? Well, I guess I got to hear that motion first.
Just point of order, you don't need a second on a nomination with Robert's rules, but you can take another nomination.
Okay. So, point taken. Good call. You're right on a nomination. So do we want to take another nomination, or do we want to call that to vote?
Whatever you want to do.
If, well, I guess if there's no other nominations, is there another nomination for CPC?
I would like to nominate myself if I could.
Can, I guess you can? I don't think there's anything.
I'm not aware of anything prevents you from.
I believe you can.
Okay.
So we have two nominations for Community Preservation Act Committee. Any other nominations? All right, Community, I'll go, I'll start with Michaela. Do all in favor of Michaela for CPC? Start with David.
Yes.
Carol?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is Michaela for CPC. Capital Improvement Program Committee, CI, or better known as CIP.
Nominate John Cotton.
Second, oh, I, I nominate John Cotton, too.
Fine job.
Any other nominations? Okay, not hearing any? All in favor of John Cotton to CIP?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess unanimous. Environmental Oversight Committee, taking nominations for Environmental Oversight Committee.
I nominate David Whedon.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, not hearing any? All in favor? Start with Michaela.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 You accept?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Economic Development Industrial Corporation, EDIC.
Who's currently been sitting on that?
I've been there for.
I nominate Carol Sherman.
All right.
It's on CPC for nine. I was on CPC for nine.
All right, so we have a nomination for Carol, any other nominations for EDIC? Not hearing any, call to vote?
Yes.
Upstayed.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, new business, additional topics, this place reserved for the chair, da-da-da, liaison reports.
I have a quick, just a quick one, the planning board, as you probably know, continues to work collaboratively on the new Raise and Replace bylaw, they've been working actively on it with a lot of different questions that have come up, and I know they're trying to get it ready for October, but there was some uncertainty about that.
Okay, anything else for liaisons? No, okay, water quality, I think we kinda-
We're trying to know where that is.
I think the town manager-
You've heard everything I've got to say.
He's given it everything he's got, anybody want to add to that, or I think we're good for the night? Yeah, okay, quiet, I'm assuming, yes. Town manager updates.
I have said everything I need to say.
Come on, all right, executive session. Motion to the executive session-
I move that pursuit to mass general law.
So each, each motion would be.
For each one.
Separate.
Okay.
It might be a second today.
Yeah, because they're trying to figure out, put it all back on. Reboot.
There's a, is there a date associated with each contract?
Yes, July 1st.
On each of them?
July 1st to June 30th on each one of them.
Thank you.
And it, and it goes for three, yes.
It was pretty much effective immediately.
Yes.
All right.
Welcome back. So can I have a motion to approve.
And ratify.
And ratify Police Captain Thomas Rose of his personal service contract.
So moved.
Effective date.
For the, for the effective dates of July 1st through June 30th, 2024, or for a three year. Or a three year term.
Three year term.
For a three year term. Effective July 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, note, discussion? Kayla?
Yes.
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 David, yes?
Yes.
Motion to approve personal service contract for Fire Chief John Phelan for the term, for the three year term beginning July 1st through June 30th.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion?
No. Yes.
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 David, we're unanimous.
Person, motion to approve and ratify personal service contract for Deputy Fire Chief Joseph Pelter for a three year term effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Yes.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any. Kayla?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, unanimous. One quick last comment. Again, the memorial that was, this was presented to the town in the Selectman's Office and what an amazing event yesterday. And this memorial is amazing. It made me think that, I, I just can't believe that a memorial was done so well done, so well represented and, you know, to, to our veterans that, you know, gave, paid the ultimate sacrifice defending this nation. But I can't say enough.
Is that to be hung?
Yes.
Here?
Yes, wherever we can, you know, we can put it. But if you, I urge the public to go by here at night. It is lit. It is amazing. Get out of your car and look at it. Well done and thank you to the committee and everybody that was involved and, and the team that made it all happen. And special thanks wanted to be said to the DPW. DPW was above and went above and beyond to make it all happen and to make all the accommodations. So thank you to the DPW and team, Catherine and the team. With that.
Shout out to Richard DeSoga. He was unbelievable throughout the entire.
Yep.
Planning.
Absolutely. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. What were you doing with that?
Have a good night.